Good evening and welcome to this May 13th, 2024, meeting of the Livermore City Council. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Beriantos. Councilmember Branning.
Here.
Councilmember Kik.
Here.
Vice Mayor Carling.
Here.
And Mayor Marchand is absent for the record.
Thank you. Would you please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance? Well, thank you. So we have several proclamations and presentations. Let's see.
And Vice Mayor, this is Tara Mazanti, Assistant City Attorney.
Oh, yes, thank you. I forgot. Was there any reportable action from our closed session meeting?
Vice Mayor, there is no reportable action taken by the City Council from closed session this evening.
Thank you very much. I wanted to get the right one here. So we're going to start with the recognizing the East Bay Housing Organization on their 40th anniversary. Whereas quality affordable housing is vitable, vital, sorry, to healthy, safe, and racially just communities. Increasing housing costs can lead longtime residents to be displaced, live in overcrowded homes, or experience homelessness threatening racial diversity and economic opportunities. And whereas regional efforts to address the growing Bay Area housing crisis are on an essential part of combating homelessness and supporting low-income seniors, families, youth, veterans, people with disabilities or special needs. Local housing organizations recognize May as Bay Area Affordable Housing Month to increase awareness of homelessness. And whereas founded in April 1984, East Bay Housing Organizations EBHO has been the leading affordable housing advocacy coalition serving Alameda and Contra Costa Counties for over 40 years. EBHO is a member-driven organization working to preserve, protect, and create affordable housing for low-income communities in the East Bay by educating, advocating, organizing, and building coalitions. And whereas each May EBHO joins community partners across the Bay Area to host Affordable Housing Month to promote opportunities to come together to build support for affordable housing and racial justice. This year, through the month of May, EBHO partnered with 31 organizations to host 33 events to educate communities on how affordable housing benefits everyone. These items, these events include groundbreakings, ribbon cuttings, panel discussions, and educational webinars covering topics such as affordable housing, finance, homeownership for middle-income families of color, and the role of housing and healthcare. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore, in honor of EBHO's 40th anniversary, thanks EBHO's board, staff, volunteers, members, and funding partners for their efforts, and encourages residents to support local programs to bring affordable housing to all community members to ensure that everyone has a safe, healthy, and affordable place called home. I think we have Darren Lowens to accept this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Carling, and council members and staff. Good evening. My name is Darren Lowens. I'm here as a representative of HCB, and I'm also a member and former board president of East Bay Housing Organizations. As EBHO celebrates its 40th anniversary, we continue to mobilize the power and wisdom of our members to produce, preserve, and protect affordable housing opportunities for low-income communities in the East Bay. To meet our mission, EBHO partners with our members to deepen our impact in local communities, fortifying the housing justice movement, and advance systemic policy change. Thank you to the City of Livermore for recognizing Affordable Housing Month. Appreciate this, and affirming your commitment to affordable housing. Personally, I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank those of you who were able to attend the Vineyard opening last Thursday. It was a wonderful event celebrating the past seven years of partnership between the city, Open Heart Kitchen, and HCB to create permanent supportive housing, a homeless resource center, and community-serving kitchen. To quote Mayor Marchand, who was able to speak at the opening, "Community is going to thrive, then everyone has to have the opportunity to thrive." Vineyard provides this opportunity. For a list of events that are part of Affordable Housing Week that Vice Mayor mentioned, you can visit ebho.org/events. Many of our neighbors are struggling to navigate housing insecurity, rising costs, and tenants' rights. We all know that when we uplift and center the most affected by the housing crisis, it strengthens our entire community. We celebrate Affordable Housing Month to call attention to the housing affordability crisis, to lift up solutions, and celebrate our achievements. This November, we have a chance to make a real difference with Bafa's Regional Housing Bond Measure across all nine Bay Area counties. If approved, it could unlock $10 billion to $20 billion for affordable housing and homelessness solutions. That means up to 45,000 new affordable homes, jobs for 29,000 people every year, and a big boost to our local economy. In a time of political division and distractions, we can all work together to ensure racially and economically just East Bay, where everyone has a safe, stable, and affordable home. We hope you join us this month to strengthen old and build new relationships on our journey for housing justice. On behalf of HCB and East Bay Housing Organization members, I thank you very much for this honor, and we hope to see you at Affordable Housing Month events throughout the month. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lowens. You're not familiar with the Vineyard Resource Center. It's on Livermore Avenue, just north of railroad. And it is a wonderful new location here, right here in the city, to provide resources for those that have been suffering homelessness and a safe place to live. So thanks again. See, the next proclamation celebrates Jewish American Heritage Month. Let me read this proclamation. Whereas the City of Livermore has been and continues to be home to people of many different national origins, immigration or refugee status, cultures, histories, races, ethnicities, religious affiliations or none, gender identities, sexual orientations, ages, education, economic status, and physical, mental, or emotional abilities. Our strength is derived from our diversity and inclusiveness. And whereas the City Council believes that a city can best embrace unity and tolerance through leading by example and living our shared community values of welcome, inclusion, and respect, and by developing common ground and venues that allow us to talk and work together for service to each other and our community. And whereas on April 20, 2006, the federal government proclaimed May as Jewish American Heritage Month stating, quote, "As a nation of immigrants, the United States is better and stronger because Jewish people from all over the world have chosen to become American citizens. And since then, proclamations in support of Jewish American Heritage Month have been made by presidents of the United States annually." And whereas Jewish residents of Livermore have been and continue to be an important part of Livermore's past and present, contributing to the arts, science, and technology, education, and government, as well as building community and advocating for social justice for all. Now therefore, the City of Livermore City Council hereby declares the month of May as Jewish American Heritage Month in appreciation of the achievements and contributions made by members of the Jewish community. The City Council supports opportunities for all to learn more about Jewish American history and culture and celebrate Jewish Americans who have, in collaboration with us, woven the fabric of our community and country. And accepting the word this evening is Sahala David, President of Congregation Beth Amek.
I'll keep it brief. Vice Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. My name is Sahala David. I am the President of Congregation Beth Amek, a business owner and a proud resident of Livermore. I'm honored to stand before you today to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Jewish community of Livermore. Our community's roots are deeply intertwined with the city's history, contributing to its cultural, economic, and social fabric. This gesture bestowed by the City of Livermore is not just a recognition of our community, but a celebration of the spirit of diversity and unity that thrives within our city. As we accept this proclamation, we are reminded of our responsibilities to each other as neighbors and friends. Let us continue to work together to support one another in times of need and to celebrate together in times of joy. Thank you.
Thank you. See, our next proclamation is declaring National Public Works Week, May 19th to the 25th. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to public health, high quality of life, and well-being for the residents of Livermore. And whereas the Public Works Department encompasses water, sewer, streets, lighting, landscaping, fleet, facilities, solid waste and recyclables collection, asset management, and airport operations. And whereas these services could not be provided without the dedicated effort of public works professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting the city's roads, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, landscaping, streets, fleet, traffic signals, and street lighting, airport operations, and other structures and facilities essential for our residents. And whereas it is in the public interest for the residents and civic leaders of the City of Livermore to gain knowledge on understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs. And whereas 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week with this year's theme, Advancing Quality of Life for All, shining a spotlight on the way public works employees advance the quality of life for the residents of Livermore through hard work and dedication. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore proclaims the week of May 19th to the 25th, 2024, as Public Works Week in the City of Livermore, and encourages residents to recognize the contribution that public work staff make every day through their health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And accepting this this evening is Judy Erlinson, City of Livermore Acting Public Works Director.
So I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of all the hard-working staff in the city's Public Works Department. Their efforts and expertise contribute to the high quality of life experienced by the community in the City of Livermore. Thank you.
Thank you. Next proclamation is proclaiming Safety Awareness Month, June 2024. Whereas the rate of accidental injuries and related deaths in the United States remains at undesirable levels. And whereas the City of Livermore employees and residents deserve to live and work in communities to promote safe and healthy living. And whereas the City of Livermore supports national safety efforts and has taken a proactive stance in providing a safe and healthy work environment for its employees and residents through the formation of the Central Safety Committee and through the development of new safety protocols. And whereas City of Livermore employees, including the Central Safety Committee, work to ensure the safety of all staff and residents by providing training, education, and outreach, and encouraging continual improvement in community and workplace safety and health. And whereas the Livermore City Council joins the members of the National Safety Council and other organizations in their annual advances, observa, sorry, in their annual observance of June as National Safety Month. And whereas the Risk Management Division will hold Safety Awareness Month consisting of safety trainings and activities to take place in the month of June. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore proclaims June 24, 2024, as Safety Awareness Month and urges all residents to help reduce accidents, injuries, and illnesses by practicing safe and healthy behaviors in all aspects of their lives. And accepting is Jas Sidhu, City of Livermore Risk Manager.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and City Council. I am Jas Sidhu, Risk Manager for the City of Livermore. I want to express my gratitude to the City Council and the City of Livermore for its continued support of risk management, safety programs, and initiatives that help keep its employees and citizens safe. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That concludes the proclamations for this evening. Now we're going to go to item number four, the open forum. And I would like to ask the city clerk to explain the process for participating in tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The City Council's agenda provides opportunity for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the City Council in the following ways. For non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the City Council on any item of interest that is within the City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. For agendized items, the public can address the City Council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the City Council, and the City Council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when council members believe it's relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. For consent calendar items, one comment may be given for the entire consent calendar. If consent calendar items are pulled for discussion by the City Council, a speaker will be allowed one comment on the items pulled for discussion and a separate comment for the remaining consent calendar. To provide comment, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance of the City Council chamber. Speakers will be announced in the order received. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced, and their three minutes will begin once at the lectern. The mayor will announce, or excuse me, the vice mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So we have about 30 minutes for comments. If it runs longer, we'll move the balance of comments to the end of the meeting. So right now, it's about 7:18. So let's say we're going to go to 7:50 for public forum comments. Can we have the first person that would like to speak to us?
Sure. The first speaker is Jean King, followed by Eric Summergren.
is important to me tonight. Okay, members of the audience wishing to provide public input must submit a speaker card found at the entrance of the council. A speaker is limited to a single comment with a maximum of three minutes. If consent calendar items are pulled for discussion by the City Council, a speaker will be allowed one comment on that item pulled for discussion and a separate comment for the remaining consent calendar. If none are pulled, then there's only one three-minute opportunity to converse about those. And so for clarification, okay, I wonder if you will respond to me. If multiple items are pulled by the council members, does the public have allotted time on each item that is pulled plus three minutes on all the remaining items on the consent calendar? I believe that we should have three minutes for each pulled item. Okay, there are 19 items on this evening's consent calendar. That's way too many items if we can only make one comment if none are pulled by the council members. And I suggest that more time be given to public if there are multiple items, like 19, on the calendar. Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Eric Summergren.
Vice Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Eric Summergren, and I'm a Livermore resident. As many of you know, groundwater contamination by PFOS chemicals is a nationwide problem. Exposure to PFOS, dubbed forever chemicals because they don't break down easily in a natural environment, has been linked to a variety of serious health problems. The EPA classified PFOS chemicals as hazardous substances last month on April 10. Sources of PFOS include landfills, fire stations, airports, wastewater treatment plants, and military-industrial sites. Here in the Tri-Valley, the Livermore Valley groundwater basin is a valuable public resource worth billions of dollars. It supplies 20% to 50% of the Tri-Valley water supply depending on drought conditions. Unfortunately, the groundwater basin has a PFOS contamination plume approximately six miles long and two miles wide in both its upper and lower aquifers. And I provided copies of the plume maps from Zone 7 report from March 2024. As a result, Pleasanton has had to shut down its municipal well field and is now considering drilling new production wells farther away from the plume. And Zone 7 has had to shut down a number of its own production wells. Since first detecting PFOS in the groundwater in 2018, Zone 7 Water Agency has been proactive in addressing water quality concerns. Zone 7 completed a PFOS treatment facility in 2023, the first of its kind in Northern California. They are planning to bring another PFOS treatment facility online this year. However, progress in identifying the sources of PFOS in the Tri-Valley is moving much too slowly. Zone 7 published a PFOS source investigation report in 2020, which identified a number of potential PFOS sources in the Tri-Valley. This report, prepared by Jacobs Engineering, was given to the Regional Water Quality Control Board, the agency responsible for PFOS source identification and cleanup. Four years have passed since that Jacobs report was released, and yet the Regional Water Board has made little headway in the recommendations listed in this report, which I've also included in that packet. This assertion of mine is based on a recent meeting that I've had with the Regional Water Board's PFOS groundwater team. Wellhead treatment by Zone 7 is only one part of the solution. Identifying PFOS hotspots at the ground surface and removing PFOS-contaminated soil is the only action that will keep these chemicals from further infiltrating into the groundwater basin and threatening the Tri-Valley's water supply. The City of Livermore should urge the Regional Water Board to hasten its PFOS source investigation and perhaps even insist that the EPA get involved as well. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you to the speakers. So now we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Those are items that are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by the City Council with a single action. Members of the audience wishing to provide public input must submit a speaker card during the public comment period to comment on any of the consent calendar items. Tonight, we're pulling item 510 from consideration. Staff will be using a different technology for the project and not completing this contract. Are there any items from the City Council that would like to be pulled? 5.1? Just 5.1? Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comments on consent items?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, let's start with that.
Is 5.1 going to have a completely separate action?
Yeah, we'll do that separately.
Separate, okay.
Are we going to do comments on everything except the full, right now?
We'll pick whatever. Let's see, what's the comment?
Most of them are on 5.1.
Well, they're most, oh, okay, well, that's.
So we can do 5.1 first and then the rest of the consent calendar.
Good, good. All right, thank you.
The first speaker is Paul Milner, followed by Felicia Ziomac, followed by David Fiala.
Good evening, council members. I'm Paul Milner. I'm a member of ASTM, formerly the American Society of Testing Materials. I retired from Chevron after 38 years working in refineries and chemical plants. I've consulted on unleaded abgas issues for the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, the FAA, and various abgas developers. I'd like to address some of the misperceptions embodied in the ordinance. Unfortunately, the way it's written, it would actually serve to hinder the introduction of unleaded abgas rather than accelerate it, which seems to be the intent. First, ASTM is only one of many standard-setting organizations. These organizations all provide a venue for voluntary collaboration of interested parties to establish specifications. Second, in and of themselves, the aviation gasoline standards do not authorize the use of any fuel in an aircraft. Instead, once the specification is established, then government bodies like the FAA, or in some cases, the manufacturers themselves, depending on the type of aircraft, approve the use of the fuel in aircraft. Third, these specifications do not address usage issues as the ordinance contemplates. Typical language from a recent unleaded abgas specification reads, "This standard does not propose to address safety concerns associated with its use." Fourth, ASTM does not provide any indemnification of resellers. Further, the ability to get product liability insurance does not depend on having an ASTM specification approval. Lloyds of London is only interested in whether a fuel is FAA-approved or not. Fifth, the ordinance language is overly narrow, confining industry standards only to ASTM, ignoring the American Petroleum Institute, the Energy Institute, and independent organizations that address both the qualities and the safe use of fuels. Industry standards are a fine thing, but federal regulatory policy prevents the federal government from limiting use to only industry consensus standards. Instead, OMB Circular A119 mandates federal agencies to allow proprietary standards as well. I believe Livermore will be well-served by following the federal guidance on this point. With all that in mind, I propose modifications to the ordinance wording to provide a level playing field and not unintentionally prevent the introduction of unleaded abgas by the very ordinance intended to promote it. I'll provide those to the clerk. Finally, as a participant myself in the ASTM standard-setting process, let me caution you that standard-setting committees are not all composed of high-minded altruistic people striving only for the betterment of mankind. Instead, corporations fund participation in ASTM and other standards undertakings to protect, defend, and establish their rights in the marketplace. In my years of participation, I've had other participants take me aside and warn that the intent is not to solve the unleaded abgas problem. I'm not saying that all participant motives are suspect, just that one should carefully assess committee participant motivations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Felicia Ziomac, followed by Jean King, followed by Linda Milanisi.
Hello, City Council and City staff. Thank you for initiating the ordinance amending the airport rules and regulations to require the FBO to provide unleaded aviation fuel by December 2025, over one and a half years from now. However, the provision of unleaded fuel needs to occur quicker, and it can. Under the STC process, the FAA issued a supplemental type certificate, STC, in September 2022 to GAMMY for a 100-octane unleaded fuel, G100UL, for general aviation aircraft. The FAA supplemental type certificate, STC, does not require an ASTM designation. A link to the FAA website that includes this reference is in the comments I'm providing today. Please confirm that GAMMY 100UL meets the requirement in the amendment you're addressing today. And if it's not included, please amend your ordinance wording to allow GAMMY 100UL to be sold since the FAA has approved its use in general aviation aircraft. The current raw material cost for G100UL abgas is about $1 more per gallon than for 100LL, and both depend on the cost of crude oil. As with 100LL, there's added cost from shipping, which depends on the distance. However, this increased cost is offset by lower maintenance cost of the engines. No lead buildup on the spark plugs and pistons, no requirements to change out the airport fuel storage tanks, nor to make any modifications to the airplane engines in order to use G100UL abgas. Eventual higher demand and larger production batches should further reduce the cost to the aircraft operators. I support Mr. Milner's proposed ordinance language improvements. The council should delay voting on approving the ordinance to give staff time to meet with Mr. Milner to discuss more appropriate language for the ordinance so GAMMY 100UL can be included in the unleaded fuel usage language. During the last city council meeting, it was mentioned that 2/3 of the fuel sold at Livermore Airport is unleaded. That's true, but the current unleaded fuel is only used in jets. The current unleaded fuel can't be used in the 457 non-jet-based aircraft at LVK. They must use leaded fuel. And then a 12 months ending February 29th, there were just over 300,000 gallons of leaded fuel sold. Just imagine the decreased lead exposure to area residents and airport employees when aviation fuel sale transitions to unleaded fuel. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Dave, sorry, Ms. King. It's actually Mr. Fiala. David Fiala, then by Jean King, and then Linda Melanisi.
Vice Mayor and city council members and city staff, thank you for letting me speak today. My name is David Fiala. I'm a 31-year Tri-Valley resident. Unleaded gas is being proposed for use by the prop-driven aircraft, and there's a concern, a need for an extra separate tank for the unleaded gas. Apparently, though, this unleaded gas can be mixed with leaded gas and used as such by the prop-driven aircraft. Thus, not necessitating a committed tank. The extra newly installed tank can be used for unmixed 100% GAMMY fuel. GAMMY 100UL fuel. The GAMMY 100UL fuel has undergone 13 years of testing without fail, and the NADA says fuel must be ASTM-approved. The FDA says fuel must have an STC or ASTM approval. So STC approval is sufficient. That's as far as we need to go. We don't need to worry about the ASTM. Concern over slightly higher cost of unleaded fuel is negated when reduced maintenance costs of unleaded fuel are factored in. Let's get grants for pilots to convert prop-driven aircraft to unleaded fuel. There are some people, some business here that we could approach and get them to come up with the grants. Unleaded gas is ready now. Let's switch before 2025. Let's start now to clean up our atmosphere, to keep communities safe, especially for our children. What's the problem?
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jean King, followed by Linda Melanisi, followed by Shirley Lewandowski.
Oh, good evening, city council members. I am reading the following comments on behalf of Donna Caban, who could not be here this evening. "Please delay voting to approve the staff's current language in the airport ordinance. Please direct staff to set up a time to meet with Paul Milner. The ordinance needs to be reworded to allow the inclusion of GAMMY G100UL in LVK's airport fuel usage. ASTM offers no indemnification or product liability protection for any party relative to the use of their specifications. The ASTM standard does not ensure compatibility, safety, or insurability. On the other hand, current producers and distributors have confirmed that there are no issues obtaining liability insurance for any fully FAA-certified aviation gas such as GAMMY 100UL. Nevertheless, FBOs and industry groups continue to purposefully mislead the public regarding the need for an ASTM specification versus the superior FAA-approved specification held by GAMMY, which goes above and beyond the ASTM specifications for 100LL. GAMMY's extensive compatibility testing was done on materials used both in the airframe and the engines of aircraft, as well as those materials used in the production and distribution system. There is absolutely no risk of, quote, "misfueling" when considering GAMMY G100UL. It is FAA-approved for intermixing in any proportion with 100 low-led AV fuel. G100UL can be intermixed in the wings of aircraft and the tanks at the airport. G100UL is fungible. It is considered a top-drop-in fuel. The same cannot be said of other fuels under development. Only GAMMY's 100UL works in all aircraft that use AL fuel. Delay voting on the airport ordinance tonight. Please set up a meeting to consider the wording of the ordinance to include GAMMY G100UL. Thank you. Sincerely, Donna Caban."
Thank you.
The next speaker is Linda Melanisi, followed by Shirley Lewandowski, followed by Pete Sandu.
I too agree with Paul Milner's suggestions to change the wording of the ordinance about fuel usage at LVK. I urge you to hold off on voting tonight until Mr. Milner can answer further questions. No current Eagle candidate fuel will work on all piston engines and airframes. GAMMY 100UL is the only unleaded aviation fuel that functions without modification on all these engines and airframes. It is a drop-in replacement for leaded AV gas. GAMMY has the backing of the largest independent energy trader in the world, Vitol. Current production is sufficient to meet the transitional needs for the next several years with the ability for other producers to join and meet worldwide needs. It is FAA-approved and currently available for commercial sale to fuel distributors and FBOs. Also, we were told LVK would be ready to offer unleaded fuel this summer. All permits would be in place, whole dug with parts ordered and installed. The ordinance still has the December 2025 date. That's too much leeway when it's a health issue. GAMMY is approved and ready now. I urge you again to hold off on voting until all questions are answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Shirley Lewandowski, followed by Pete Sandu.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council, and City Staff. I'm Shirley Lewandowski. All the comments made before me on GAMMY G100UL unleaded aviation gas are good justifications for it to be included in the city's ordinance for unleaded aviation gas use. There is absolutely no justified or rational reason it should not be included. We are in a semantics dilemma on the staff's proposed ordinance for unleaded AV gas use. As pointed by Mr. Milner, the current wording in the section red line on page 3 of Attachment 1 is contradictory and confusing. He has proposed wording more appropriate and would eliminate confusion. I'm asking the staff to set a time to meet with Mr. Milner to revisit this section and improve the wording so it is crystal clear for the public to understand. Therefore, I ask the city council as well to please delay voting on this proposed ordinance until clarification can be done. GAMMY G100UL is the most efficient, fungible, high-octane unleaded aviation gas in the industry. The FAA, Federal Aviation Administration, has fully qualified, certified, and given its seal of approval for GAMMY G100UL for commercial sale and for use for the complete fleet of piston-engine planes in the United States. It is the only unleaded aviation gas to get this recognition, the only one. But most important of all, GAMMY GUL100 is the best UL, sorry, is the best solution to finally eliminate the public health issue of air pollution from toxic leaded aviation gas. GAMMY G100UL is the best solution to eliminate further exposure of toxic leaded abgas to the 5-plus million people who live within 1.5 miles of the remaining 20,000 U.S. general airports that still sell leaded gas. GAMMY G100UL would provide a safer and healthier environment for airport workers and pilots even, given their close proximity to the exhausted abgas fumes during the warm-up of piston-engine airplanes before takeoff. To answer David's question, there is no problem. GAMMY G100UL is the best choice of unleaded aviation gas for Livermore Airport and the other U.S. general airports in the U.S. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The last speaker for 5.1 is Pete Sandu.
Hi, good evening. Excuse me, my voice has been off for the last few days. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I appreciate the comments of all the previous speakers, and we're all on the same team. Everybody wants unleaded. Everybody loves the maintenance advantages and environmental advantages of unleaded. Many of these same speakers referenced other airports in the Bay Area that provide unleaded. Watsonville, Hayward, Reed Hillview, San Carlos, et cetera. None of them are using the GAMMY product. And yes, Lloyds of London will insure anything. They'll insure, you know, a boxer's hands against injury. But there's nobody that is currently providing insurance for the GAMMY product. So as much as you want to quote all the things that are on their marketing literature and their website, it's not a commercially viable product. And the National Air Transportation Association put out a white paper saying it's not a commercially viable product. The only entity that says it is a commercially viable product is GAMMY themselves. Their STCs cost between $300 and $700 per airplane. The currently available unleaded fuel that all the other airports are using have a $100 STC per airplane. That STC is good for their existing product as well as their 100-octane product. And many aircraft in the Bay Area already own that STC. One of the biggest flight schools at the Livermore Airport already owns that STC for many of their aircraft at other airports that are currently using it, and they committed to use it if we bring it to Livermore, too. So we could use a different product. We could be the first to use this GAMMY product, but no one will buy it because no one owns the STC. The STC is very expensive, and it's soon to be replaced. It's not a long-term solution. So no one's willing to spend a lot of money for something that they're only going to use for a year or two. Whereas the flight school on the airport already uses the SWIFT product. San Carlos uses the SWIFT product. Hayward uses the SWIFT product. Reed Hill uses the SWIFT product. Watsonville uses the SWIFT product. If we put it in our tanks right now, people will buy it right now. That's the important thing. If we want to get unleaded fuels used in aircraft here at Livermore, let's use the one that people want to have. We all want unleaded. We shouldn't be picking winners and losers. And on ordinance, we should let the market pick the winners and losers, and the market has decided that SWIFT is the more preferable product. And it's insured, so it's easy to sell, and people like it because it's easy to buy. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment for 5.1.
So let's see. Everybody agrees about GAMMY 100 mostly. Well, I shouldn't say mostly. It sounds like GAMMY 100 is not included in the ordinance. Is that fair to say?
I'm Benny Stuth, the acting airport manager. In the ordinance language itself, it actually does conclude GAMMY. We do not include any fuel that's brand-specific, so we talk about it in generalities. So the ordinance under the definitions actually defines it as any alternative fuel, e.g. MoGas or hydrogen, that are authorized for use by the FAA for use in an aircraft engine, an aircraft-engine-airframe combination, and rotor-wing aircraft either through an ASTM designation or a supplemental type certificate. So under either one of those, either through an ASTM or a supplemental type certificate, you can use any unleaded fuel that's currently available and potentially to be available. So GAMMY 100 is under an STC certificate. So once GAMMY becomes available in the marketplace and is available for people to buy with a supplemental certificate, they would be able to purchase that, and we potentially could carry it. The one thing that I would caution is that while GAMMY is considered a drop-in unleaded fuel, there has been no testing on its ability to mix with UL94, which is predominantly the unleaded aviation gas that is used in the area. So anybody using unleaded fuel from a different airport would not be able to mix that fuel if they came to Livermore and we had it. The other issue is GAMMY 100 is not yet available in the marketplace. We've been told to expect it by the spring or summer. However, that's the same message we received last year. So we are just waiting to see what happens. Just because we use UL94 now, if that's the case, by July, when we have the tank ready to go, which is our estimated timeframe, that does not preclude Five Rivers Aviation from changing over to GAMMY at a later date if that's what they want to do. So in short answer your question, GAMMY 100 would be allowed under this ordinance.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. In these red lines, which I pulled up again, I see nothing that states that ASTM is the only certification. ASTM is an example of a possible certification, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Nowhere in the definitions does it name a brand name of fuel. Is that correct?
That is correct.
It is not generally good government practice to tell anybody that they have to use Apple or Microsoft. So just like we don't tell anybody that Microsoft is better than Apple, it's my personal opinion, we cannot tell people which fuel they are or are not allowed to buy, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. The red line seems pretty clear to me that this is a free-market ordinance and that our FBO would be able to make that decision, not the city itself. Okay, just wanted to clarify all that.
Thank you, Mr. Barry Antles.
If we offer GAMMY, for example, do we have to have another special tank for that along with the other ones?
So as I understand it, GAMMY 100 does not need a special tank. It is a drop-in fuel, meaning it can be mixed with regular 100 low-led. So you would not have to empty a tank and clean it out to use that fuel. But the same can be said also for UL94, which is the currently available unleaded aviation fuel, which also can be mixed with regular 100 low-led.
I understand a lot of people want to get the unleaded in their planes as quick as possible. And if we wait for GAMMY, like some people are suggesting, that would take a longer delay for that?
As GAMMY 100 is not currently available in the marketplace, there would be a delay until that it is readily available in the marketplace.
Thank you. Mr. Rannick?
All right, thank you. I want to thank the commentators for their passion on this subject, but I do start to feel like a broken record at this point. So I'll ask the questions I've asked pretty much every meeting now, it feels like, for the last several. Roughly, what is the timeline we have for selling unleaded fuel?
So we have the timeline on our website, on the airport website, under transitioning to unleaded fuel at LVK. In talking with not only the Bay Area Quality Management District, but also Five Rivers Aviation, we've put together that timeline and posted it on there. Once the tank upgrades are completed and the required inspections are done and the notice of intent to operate is issued to BACUMD in order to get the permit to operate approximately seven days after. Our estimated date for having unleaded aviation fuel at the airport is July 1st.
Thank you. And is this process entirely within the city's control?
No.
And because of that, we put a buffer into the original ordinance, even though we believe we will get it done considerably sooner. Seems to me there's no real reason to change that buffer because we will be selling unleaded fuel likely within a few months. On top of that, picking winners and losers seems like a real loser to me if we are specifying the fuels we can use. Mr. Sandu has come up here many times and said he's interested in selling unleaded fuel as well as other types of fuel in the future in the hopes to reduce the carbon footprint as well as the leaded. as well as the leaded fuel usage at the airport. I believe that Mr. Sandu has stated a number of times his interest in making sure that it's a healthy, environmentally friendly, safe. And I assume, since he is running a business, a profitable venture. He does need to, you know, continue to operate. I think that he does know the industry fairly well. So we have an ordinance in front of us that does not preclude the use of Gami. It allows for a variety of different fuel choices to be made throughout the process. We are in the middle of the process that is not controlled by us to get unleaded fuel as quickly as possible. I will say that staff has bent over backwards to try in every way to speed up this process as much as possible. We have done everything imaginable that we can under our control to get this to go as quickly as possible. And I believe that Mr. Sandu has been absolutely a great partner in this of working to try to get it to also go as quickly as possible from his end. Any changes we make to the ordinance can only, at this point, slow things down. I think that it is great that we have suggestions on improved language. I would strongly encourage my colleagues that we approve the language that we have if there are improvements to be made later. This is exactly what we're doing right now, which is the opportunity in the future to change it. The idea of hurry up and wait constantly being the motto of some people is getting a little frustrating to me. We come up with solutions, they're not enough, we need more. We are not going to give it so that every, every single plane flying out of the airport is using unleaded fuel until the FAA itself has put down laws that say that that is the law of the land. What we can do is work as quickly as we can to get as many planes using unleaded fuel as possible. This ordinance helps that. So with that, if there's no further comment, I'll make a motion to approve 5.1.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor, first and second. Any other further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. So 5.1 is approved. We're going to go on to the rest of the consent calendar. Any other items on the consent that people would like?
I'm clarifying, we are pulling 5.10 not to discuss it, it is no longer on the consent calendar.
Correct. 5.10 has been pulled completely off the, off of tonight's agenda. Any other discussion on the consent items?
I'll move approval for consent.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Do we have any?
We do. We have one person for the remaining calendar.
Thank you. Thank you. That's okay.
The speaker is Jean King.
Jean King. Okay. Ms. King.
Speaking about 5.12, 5.12. Okay, I thank the city and the developer for providing 34.4 affordable units in the 172-unit subdivision. That's 20% inclusionary housing. I thank staff member Fran Reasoner for meeting with me to explain how the allocation of low-income housing works. It is an arrangement that is worked out with the developer. It is a choice and a compromise. If we want to keep the developers' subsidies the same, we have the choice of fewer low and very low-income units with a higher per-unit subsidy by the developer, or more median and moderate income units with a lower per-unit subsidy by the developer. It's not an easy choice. Most of the units approved lately have been of medium and median and moderate income units. There is a lack of low and very low-income units in Livermore. I would like to see more of these. It's not, there is no direct cost to the city. The in-lug fee of $90,237 for 4/10ths of an affordable unit makes the total price of a unit to be $225,593. That seems like a low amount. I asked the city to increase the in-lug fee to encourage the developers to provide the units rather than use the in-lug fee. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment on the rest of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council?
I'll move approval on.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a first and second for all the other items, 5.2 to 5.20 with the exception of 5.10. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes on to 6.1. City manager.
Yes, Honorable Vice Mayor Carling and members of the city council, this is your city manager, Mariana Maresheva. Item 6.1, public hearing, is going to be presented by Judy Erlinson, Acting Public Works Director. Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Carling and members of the city council. The item before you tonight requests that the city council consider the annual adjustment to LSI rates for the upcoming rate year 15, which coincides with fiscal year 2425. Livermore Sanitation began serving the city of Livermore in July 2010 after a competitive selection process. In April 2020, the city council approved the updated franchise agreement with LSI, extending the contract term by a minimum of 10 years. The franchise agreement states that Livermore Sanitation proposes rates, and it's the city council's responsibility to approve rates by determining if the proposed adjustment complies with the methodology as described by the franchise agreement. LSI is required to provide at least 30 days' notice to ratepayers when rates are adjusted. Rate adjustments occur every year using either an index-based methodology or a cost-based review. A cost-based review occurs every four years. The next cost-based review is scheduled for next year, rate year 16. For this upcoming rate year 15, an index-based methodology was used. The index-based methodology utilizes various cost adjustment factors such as the percent change in the Consumer Price Index. These indices are noted and then applied to certain categories of costs, and in some cases, they are capped. This slide summarizes, oh, pardon me. This slide summarizes previous rate increases and associated indices. As noted in the table, rate year 15, staff is recommending a 3.68% overall increase. Additionally, the motor vehicle index, you can see, was over 12%, but as an example, that was capped at 6% per the franchise agreement. Staff has confirmed that the rate adjustment calculations comply with the franchise agreement methodology and is therefore recommending that city council approve an increase to rates for all customers by 3.68%. This is a comparison of current rates and proposed rates and the number of cart subscriptions in each size. You'll note over 80% of the residents subscribe to the two smaller cart sizes. And again, staff's recommendation is to approve an increase for rates by all customers or all customers by 3.68%.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Do you have any public comment?
Yes, sir, we do. The speaker is Jim McSherry.
Good evening, members of the city council. I am a new member of Alameda County Taxpayers Association. I've come to talk to you about already high garbage rates and your likely intent to raise them further. First, the $3.3 million the city extracts each year from the citizens of Livermore, renamed fees for various descriptions is, as you all know, an unlawful tax. Why? Because Prop 13, 218, and Prop 26 all passed into law with increasing clarity by the voters of this state that any proposed increases in rates, taxes, fees, and revenue paid by the residents directly or indirectly to the government shall be put before the voters before being assessed. Due to your lack of concern and care for our best interests, there are now two legal suits in the court system that specifically describe the actions unlawfully already taken by the city of Livermore regarding illegal hidden fees, taxes, and handling of monies. If you collectively decide to increase our garbage rates yet again, then you are breaking the rule of law and, in effect, putting the city attorney's job betting on its outcome. The recent ruling on the referendum of the Eden Project should be a reminder that the rule of law will prevail, and the long-term citizens of this town will not give up on what's right. I am required to pay four times, four or four times more collections than I need. I noticed that we did not receive the typical increase in rates cards normally sent out in the mail preceding this vote. This is consistent with the ever-increasing effort by the council to keep us all in the dark regarding these matters. Further, the new owners of Livermore Sanitation have become even more ruthless in collecting by adding another $10 per month on any late payments. You should be actively working in behalf of Livermore's residents to secure the best possible rates. We are asking each of you to consider lowering the garbage rates by at least 11% because the franchise fees are, in reality, a tax which the voters of Livermore have not approved. The city is not in the business of making a profit, and we should not have to pay one. There are legal precedents for not heeding this warning. Lopez-Burton versus the Town of Apple Valley San Bernardino Superior Court, for example, and the outcome was a $3.15 million refund, basically. I might also suggest you implement an income-based rate with actual discount instead of the sham of qualifying for a larger can, which no senior on low income needs. Further, I'm asking that when, come July, okay, is there any one of you that will speak in our behalf? I'll end it with that.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
All right, thank you. Any discussion, council members? Do I have a motion?
It was mentioned that the rate cards didn't go out. The rate cards didn't go out because we haven't approved any rate hikes. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just clarifying.
This is an action item, right? We need, can I, do I have a motion then? Thank you. Moved by Mr. Barry Entos, seconded by Councilmember Kik. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. On to committee reports and matters initiated by any of us. Let's see, Mr. Branning, we'll start with you.
All right. So the official business I did was in the packet. It's been a fun couple of weeks. There's been a lot going on. It's been kind of exhausting, actually, the amount of things. I've been at an event almost every night. I will say, coming up, there are a lot of cool things. One thing is, I will be pouring at the LDI Street Fest on Sunday, so anyone who wants to come out and say hi to me in person, I'll be at the Bankhead site Sunday afternoon. So I hope to see you there. It's a great event, tons of fun for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barry Entos.
Well, I've been kind of sidetracked for a while. I'm not sure if people know, my 100-year-old mother passed away a couple of weeks short of her 101-years-old, so I've been kind of busy with that. And I did go to the Bankhead last night. If anybody went there, that pianist that was homegrown, Lyle Black, Jason Lyle Black, he was fantastic. You should go to somebody and support the Bankhead. It's one of the gems of Livermore. And when people talk to me about, from other cities, they see Livermore as where all the culture is, where all the art is, where all the music is. I didn't solicit that. I just, oh, okay. And I really strongly support the arts, and I wish we'd have more people involved. There were a few seats empty, but not many. If you want to see a pianist that's really good, and he went to Sunset, and then Granada High School, and he's now a big shot. He's going to play in Belgium or Germany. I think he'll do that today. Anyway, enjoy some of the things that are offered at the Bankhead. I hope some of you will become members and at least go check out a ticket. A lot of people do come from other cities to view and see what we have here. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Kik?
I have an adjustment to the printed report. I was not at Las Pecitas College. Someone chose my name instead of theirs. I was at work. Somebody else had fun there instead of me. I have nothing exciting to report. I, you know, I understand there's no need for further discussion on the item. We signed an agreement, blah, blah, blah. But it would be interesting to get a memo about the income-based payments, and if it really is that you just get a bigger can, just because if you're a single person, that doesn't really seem to make sense to me. So if we could get some information about that, and that would be great. I actually do have something fun to report. I am a co-champion of the Moms' Day Softball League. We were down 9 to 1. We were being taunted that we should give up, and we didn't. And it was like a Disney movie, and we came back and we tied, and the game had to end because it was dark. So we are co-champions with our team, Batter Up Buttercup. Thank you, Livermore Little League. That is all the exciting things I've been doing, is just baseball moming. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one item I wanted to inquire about, and that is Ms. King brought up the issue about confusion about how many items a person could speak to under the consent, and when there's 20 items, that seems pretty tough to, so could we, could somebody look at the language in that and make sure that it's clear to all concerned about how to deal with public comment on the consent items? Would that be all right, or?
Vice Mayor, we can certainly take a look at the language that we provide verbally as well as on the agenda, but the rule is relatively simple. If an item is not pulled for discussion, then a speaker has three minutes for all of the consent items. If an item is pulled for discussion, then the speaker has three minutes for each item pulled, plus three minutes on the remainder of the calendar. And we can take a look and clarify it if that's not clear.
All right, thank you. I just had a couple of things. I don't know whether I mentioned it earlier or not. I did attend the opening of the Vineyard Resource Center. I neglected to include it in my staff report, so I just wanted to point that out. And like Mr. Loun said, it was a terrific event, and there were, it's, again, if you have the opportunity of going just to visit, it's certainly worthwhile to see what people, cities, nonprofits, private companies can work together to provide the kind of opportunities that we now have on Livermore Avenue just north of Railroad. Again, it's a combination of Housing Consortium of the East Bay as well as Open Heart Kitchen. It is a wonderful facility for many people. I would like to agree with my colleague, Mr. Barry Entos, on the fine performing arts here in this community. I would recommend you go to Livermore High School and see "Mamma Mia." So we went, my wife and I went to a performance last weekend, and Livermore High is putting on two more performances Thursday and Friday of this week, but the voices are just spectacular. These are teenagers. It's just amazing. So again, the Bankhead's fabulous, and you know I've spoken about it many times in this venue, but I would also offer the Livermore High, and this is a combination, even though it's at Livermore High School, at the Carol Hubby Theater, it's also joint with Granada because, in part, because Granada doesn't have quite the venue that Livermore High has for putting on these kinds of performances. And so there are actually students from both high schools participating, but it is, I mean, if you've ever seen "Mamma Mia," I mean, all the songs are familiar from ABBA, and the voices are just, again, I just can't say enough about. And the voices are just, again, I just can't say enough about the teenagers that are singing their hearts out. So again, I suggest you have the opportunity Thursday or Friday night, go see ABBA at Livermore High. I just want to turn serious for just a moment. And as I adjourn this meeting, I'm going to do so in memory of Willow Alcala, the beloved daughter of our city attorney, Jesa Alcala, and his wife Tiffany. Willow passed away recently. And though she left friends and family much too soon, she will always hold a place in their hearts. So on behalf of the mayor, city council, city staff, and residents of Livermore, our hearts go out to the extended Alcala family in this time of grief and sorrow. Meeting adjourned.